And I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 7, 2020 City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Dave Line.
Here.
Soldner.
Here.
Bagwell.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And today's prayer will be given by Pastor Gary Gedding. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. Shall we pray? Our gracious heavenly Father, we are once again thankful for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us as citizens of this community as well as this country. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans and for the opportunities that come our way as well to look out for each other, to serve one another. And so I pray for this council today. We appreciate the time and energy that they spend on behalf of the city. We pray for wisdom and discernment in their discussions and decisions. We are also grateful for those who serve us throughout our community as first responders. And especially today, we're mindful of Rex Albright and his family on the recent passing of his wife, and we pray for your continued comfort and giving peace to that family as they work through this loss. And we're mindful, of course, others who have had losses in recent days. Lord, we just thank you for your love for us in Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, I'd like to have, I think it's going to be Amy, join me at the podium.
And Justin.
Good morning. It's a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, but since the pandemic struck, I think every month has been Parks Recreation Month, so this is fitting. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Hutchinson, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation service for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase communities' economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of Hutchinson recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore, I, Jay Pyros DeCarvallo, Mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2020 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Hutchinson.
Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. So Mayor, you took my joke that I do every year about how every month should be Parks and Recreation. So thank you for that. So yesterday, I was kind of thinking about what I wanted to say today, what I wanted my message to be, and I broke out my master plan that we approved last May, and we were just kind of reading through some of the survey results that we did, and I wanted to bring one particular question and some answers to everybody's attention. It's very basic questions. What's the purpose of Parks and Recreation? And so there's about 20, 25 answers here, but I want to read the top three answers to you again. What are the purpose of Parks and Recreation? And the number one answer was to influence positive behavior and to reduce juvenile crime. The second most popular answer was to provide a safe place and activities for youth during non-school hours, and the third was to encourage life activity, active lifestyles, and promote healthy wellness and fitness. So my point is, as a Parks and Recreation professional, I've always had this understanding that Parks and Rec goes much beyond those direct impacts. So it's easy to put Parks and Rec in a box, to say that all we do is playgrounds, or trails, or youth athletics, but it's clear that the citizens see Parks and Rec as providing a much greater benefit, tackling some major issues that every community faces, not just ours, things like juvenile crime, things like fitness and wellness. And so I want to challenge everybody over the next 30 days to not look at Parks and Recreation as just those direct benefits. So what does that mean? So take, for example, youth softball. So I coach my eight-year-old and coach pitch softball, and the direct result or the direct impact of that softball team is my daughter gets to enjoy some time with her dad, gets to enjoy some time with friends, get some physical activity. But the indirect impact of that is we're building character in these kids. We're teaching them things like teamwork, dedication, confidence, especially young girls. You know, when that girl gets her first hit of the year, or catches that first pop fly, those are the indirect impacts that Parks and Recreation has. And again, it's easy to put Parks and Rec in that box. If we just do this, I challenge you over the next 30 days to really focus on what Parks and Rec does for our community. Again, thank you for your support of Parks and Recs over the last several years since I've been here. I want to give a big shout out to Hutch Rec. They've been great partners over the last six years. But Ken and Tony, I don't remember. Six years or so that I've been here, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Justin.
Good morning. I'm Amy Conklin, Director of Marketing and Development for Hutch Rec, and I'm going to piggyback off of a few comments that Justin had left. So we have been really focusing on Parks and Rec Matter. That has been a campaign that we have really embraced for several years, but especially the last few months when the times of COVID have changed our world drastically. And we want to celebrate this month and thank the community of Hutchinson and Reno County for their work and dedication in providing a summer for our residents. When so much of the world around us was shut down or not able to open, we have been able to do so with health and safety as our top priority. We were one of the first aquatic centers in the state to open the summer with Salt City Splash Aquatic Center, and did so and have been doing so successfully, again, keeping that health and safety of our residents and our participants' top priority. We've been able to offer outdoor adventure camp at Dillon Nature Center, as well as several other outdoor activities and classes to the youth in our community. As Justin talked about, we've been able to open Fund Valley Sports Complex, and not only allow teams to come in for tournaments, for the economic impact in our town, but also for our local youth and sports leagues, for fast pitch softball, T-ball, and baseball. But that extends beyond just the facilities, the aquatic center, the ball fields, and the nature center being open. Parks and Rec Matter really significantly for the people involved. We've had several of our lifeguards that have worked at Salt City Splash Aquatic Center go on to actually receive training and be on our Hutch Police Department, our Hutch Fire Department, part of our EMS crews. They're making an impact right here in Hutchinson and Reno County. We've had several of our camp counselors go on to become educators and come back and teach at our local school districts. We've had, like Justin, we've had people who have been impacted by a youth sports coach and come back to want to coach their kids' teams to make a difference in our community. So not only do our facilities and our activities matter, but also the people behind them, and we are just thrilled and so happy that the city of Hutchinson has partnered with Hutch Rec, and our community has supported us and made a statement that Parks and Rec Matter, especially during these times of COVID. So we thank you, and like Justin said, we appreciate your support and hope that you celebrate with us not only in July, but all year long of Parks and Rec mattering in Hutchinson and in Reno County. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy.
Yes.
That includes yourself. I remember you've been there a long time yourself, and weren't you a lifeguard?
I actually, Karen Neal, our board chair, hired me at 15 years old as a lifeguard for Salt City Splash, and I became a pool manager and came back, and yeah, Parks and Recreation Matter.
That includes yourself, yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I certainly think that our park system is one of the best parts of Hutchinson, and the fact that we're able to partner with one of the premier recreation commissions in the entire region, not just the state, is an amazing thing, and I hope that partnership can continue to stay strong, and everybody takes advantage of those outdoor activities, which we've all heard are much, much safer in this era. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
This is the time in the meeting where we allow anyone to come before the council with comments on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to five minutes and state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Mitch Gumbel, and I live at 1506 Linwood Drive. And I would just like everyone here to know, I am a small business owner. I do run a furniture store here in town, new and used, and I also have rental properties. And the COVID-19 has hit us pretty hard, and I've got a house at 3207 East Sherman that has cost me a lot of money, and I finally thought that I had the citations off my back, and I could start, continue to work on my rentals again. I now have five sitting, two from COVID-19, one caught on fire about six weeks ago at 324 East Day, and that was no fault of mine. They put some coals up next to the house after they had a barbecue, and it started the house on fire. I've also got one that I started 10 months ago, and this rental is $700 a month, and I started, all the wood floors in the house, I started re-sanding, and then I got in trouble on 327, so I had to go there, and all my spare time is spent there. It's not even a rental. And I finally got this all done, went to court, it's finished, it's behind me. And then a couple of days later, I get three more in the mail. After going to court on June 19th, these were all dated June 19th from John Vitter. I've got to work on these other houses. The income is $2,100 a month. The person that started my house on fire at 324 is still living there right now, but he won't continue to live there if I don't get progress done. The insurance money just now came in for it, so we can start doing some things, but I do the work. So basically, we're looking about $2,800 a month. Don't sound like a lot until you start adding month after month after month. The house where I started the floors were already $7,000. That's money I can't recoup. But being a small business, I need to be able to work on those things. These are the three citations I go to court on, on the 31st of July. And they're all just, they're nothing citations, but they're going to take time, and they're going to take more money, and I need to work on this other stuff. And I don't know how I get that time. I can still get that house painted at 715 East Sherman this fall, but I got to get these other places rented. We have, our businesses have been impacted from the COVID-19 everywhere, with the furniture store where we were shut down to our rentals. I'm asking for some help. I'm asking for some help on these.
Yeah, absolutely. Well-
July 31st is just, he wrote these on the 19th, it went to the judge, and he signed them on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Three days.
Mitch, I'm sorry you're having all these issues. It sounds like a lot, and $2,800 a month sounds like a lot, even when it's not compounding. So let's take a look at those. If you can sit down with Jeff, I think you have a meeting, or you are-
I think we do have a meeting.
So let's look at those and see what we can't do to get those off the docket and allow you some time to work on those.
Okay.
Okay, but I appreciate you bringing it up to us. And again, I'm sorry for all you've gone through and all the small business owners. I know it's been very tough, and we certainly don't want to compound those challenges.
Right. And all the houses that I bought in Hutchinson, I've been buying for 20 years, and I will buy the house, and I'll spend two or three years fixing it up. I've never had trouble before until about 2016, and then everything, then my whole world just-
Yeah.
I, you know, they could see improvements, everything, but everybody stayed away from me, and then after that, it was just, you know how many times I've been here?
Yeah.
How many troubles? I've had a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
So-
Well, we'll take a look at it.
Right now, I need to get these other houses rented, and that's where I need to get my attention.
For sure, for sure. Point very well taken, so.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that most of the houses that I buy have sat dilapidated for years, 10 years, 15 years, and we as a city let that happen, and then we have a local business that is willing to invest in those houses. Even if it takes two to three years to fix up, that's better than sitting there until it needs to be torn down.
Right.
So I think we should show a little bit of a thank you.
I appreciate that, because I do put new windows, new roofs, new siding. I care about how they live.
And I don't think we should have some practices that discourages that kind of investment, because that's helping maintain some of those houses that are becoming dilapidated in our town. And we let a lot of them go for a long time, and if someone's willing to buy them, I think we should give them two to three years to fix it up if they sat there 10 to 15 years in the condition that they're in.
And I've got 20 homes, and I don't even let my people that rent from me mow the yards. When I'm here today, I change, and I mow all day Tuesday, from sunup to sundown. It's mow day. I mean, really, my tenants don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
I provide the appliances, I work on the appliances if they're down, I mow the yards, I paint the houses, and I could bring, I could bring all my tenants in here, and they would speak highly of me. I mean, when Jill got, when Jill went down to the hospital, some of our tenants got together and started, and made thousands of dollars for us to help her out in the hospital.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Well, that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gumbel, I appreciate you staying in Hutch for all the stuff that you've done through. Let's take one step at a time. Let's work with us, we'll take one step at a time, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I too have somebody to say.
Sure. Is there, I think there's a microphone back there. Are you listening? Maybe?
They don't relate, no. They're getting it.
Yeah.
I mean, I can speak, if you can hear me, it's up to you.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, okay, thank you. Do I have to do something? Is it, oh, there it is, okay. And I have to get my glasses, because, you know, we're getting older. Anyway, good morning, council. I just wanted to come by today and talk to you about something that we had spoke about before the COVID back in February, and that was forming a committee or a board to evaluate the properties that had citations on them, and which ones were actually valid enough to be going to court and which ones were not. I know we had discussed that briefly, and you guys had talked about maybe getting something put together so that we could set some guidelines and timelines for all these properties, and especially for those that are not showing any progress and basically are just blatantly disregarding any compliance whatsoever. They're not doing anything. Currently, I have a really large concern about the amount of time that's being spent, time and money that's being spent on taking people to court, on just really insignificant citations. We are spending a lot of money on staff hours with paperwork, the citations, the complaints, the court appearances, and the mailings. We're also spending the municipal court payroll time for the judge, the prosecuting attorney, bailiffs, and municipal court clerical staff, not to mention all of the money that has to go out that costs the city for mailings, and that's all paid for. All of this is paid for with taxpayers' dollars. We also need to consider the people who have to take time off of work to go in for numbers that are too small on the house. We have been dragged into court over something like that, and if we weren't self-employed and had to take time off of work, if I didn't have any time left because I'd used it on sick kids or whatever, that would have been lost wages that I would have also incurred. What I think that the city needs to work on is just establishing a fair process that's equal treatment for everyone regarding each citation. We need to have consistent timeframes established for people, not we go in 30 days and other people given months and years. Legal action, I feel, of being taken to court and being criminalized should be used as a very last resort and not as a form of retaliation or harassment. And as I sit here today, I will tell you guys again, ever since I became the Central Kansas Landlord Association President, I'm here to help do whatever we can to help facilitate a better working relationship with the council, with the city, with the inspection department. We want to do what we can. There are very easy, simple, drama-free ways that we can get to a point where we're all on the same page, because we all want the same thing. We want a better housing market, and I will tell you, as the landlord president, we do have bad landlords, and we can address that. And I think that there's a good way that we can sit down and do this, but we have to sit down and be willing to work together and not against each other. So that's basically all I have to say, but I do want to add that he forgot that we have one more property that just became vacant because a man was thrown in jail for 13 months, and they've just vacated the property yesterday. So it's more than whatever it was, $2,800. You can add 550 to that, so he did forget that one. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you guys listening, and I really hope, because this was done back in February, I believe, when we talked about this, and COVID hit, and everybody, everything changed. But I really hope that the idea of working together has not changed, and that we are going to move forward on trying to establish some fairness, some rules, and some guidelines, timelines that everybody has to comply with. So thank you very much for your time.
I know that I had attended some housing committee meetings.
Yes.
After we've discussed that, to try to get a timeline implemented, I tried to work with Ryan Heeblock and the Housing Commission. I'm hoping that we could reconsider. I was hoping that we could have a, almost like a triage, where certainly, of course, if it's a life-threatening situation-
Oh, absolutely.
Those need to be considered in the short amount of time. If it's a property maintenance code that's just peeling paint, you know, we have a limited of one year before it goes to court, or that way we can establish guidelines, because I don't think it is fair for someone to get sent to court where it's criminalized if it is a small issue like that. But I also don't think it's fair on the community for someone just not to do it. So I think that we should consider a board made up of maybe homeowners, renters, landlords, maybe like one work tradesman that could evaluate these prior to sending them to court.
May I interject just one thing, Sarah? I don't mean to interrupt, but one good example of this is, we bought a property in November, and we received, four days after it went in our names, we received a citation for peeling and chipping paint in December, and we're given 30 days in December in Kansas to paint a house and a garage. Okay, that's not going to happen until at least March or April. So there are months right there, and we were told in court, well, you're not making any progress. Well, how do you make progress in the winter on peeling and chipping paint? So it isn't fair when we are being taken into court saying, you haven't done anything. Well, how can you? It's not realistic. It's a waste of your time, it's a waste of materials, it's a waste of everything. And there's just no common sense being given when you're getting citations like that. You just can't paint. I could bring in three professional painters right now that will say, we don't paint exterior paint in these certain months, because you can't. And there's just things that I think common sense needs to come back to the inspection department, because you can't do that. It's just not, oh, you could. We have a guy that was threatened with court and threatened with jail if he didn't get it done, that lives across the street from our building, and he spray painted his house, well, I shouldn't say spray painted, sprayed with a sprayer, his paint, and he's already having issues this spring. But he painted in the winter months. You can't do it. There's just some things that cosmetically cannot be taken care of in certain months in Kansas.
Well, I do think that this is something that should go before the Housing Commission as an agenda item, the idea of committee, the idea of looking at some of our procedures. I respect your comments on over-litigating trivial items. That is a costly matter, and it doesn't help with the relationship between the city and the citizens. So I certainly want to, you know, make sure we're not doing that. It has been top of mind, city manager and I have had multiple conversations about it. I think he's had conversations with other people in council, so we're definitely looking at a cultural shift in that department and seeing what we can do to be more helpful instead of, I guess, more authoritarian.
It just seems like, you know, when we have the registration program and the licensing program that so many people were against, it was a very, very targeted, very punitive program, and that went away, fortunately. But I mean, we need to get back to the point where people do not fear coming in and talking to the city, because they're going to get thrown in jail, or they're going to get kicked out of their house, or threatened and harassed. That needs to come to an end. There is no way that we can move forward and better our community if we're doing things that are hurting the citizens.
Yeah, I think that you could, of course, the committee that I was speaking of wouldn't necessarily deal with every code violation. It would be like if the code enforcement department is having troubles and doesn't see, it would then go to there, and then after there, as a last resort, be sent to court.
Yeah, I think court needs to be a last resort. That's a really good point. Who is the chair of the Housing Commission now? Anybody? Lisa Gleason, okay. Now, have you been in touch with her at all, Jill?
No, I have not talked to Lisa, because I didn't know who to talk to. The last time we spoke was in February. In February, sorry. Last time we spoke in February, I believe it was a meeting in February when we all got together and had talked about forming this committee or a board, or who to put on it, or what to do. That's not my decision, I just have ideas, and I'm with Sarah. I think it needs to be a very broad group, because everybody gets impacted by it, whether you're a tenant, whether you're an owner occupied person on that property. It doesn't matter, it affects everybody, and I do think that maybe a person who is in construction, who knows realistic timeframes, needs to be on there. There's plenty of people who are, well, they might not want to volunteer because they're retired, but you could talk to some retired people who've been in this position- who've been in this position, who have the experience and the knowledge of what it really actually takes. Because we had a sheet rocker that we had hired to come in for this fire. And just because he says, I'll be there in three weeks, doesn't mean he's going to. And I know Nancy, you had a problem last year with your painter not showing up. You know, just because you get on the books on June 1st doesn't mean they're going to be there. I sold real estate and let me tell you, it could be August or September before they actually show up. So, you know, you have to be given some consideration. And oftentimes, consideration had not been given in the past.
Yeah, and I'd also like to get Ryan Veedlock's input on this and see, I think is the staff in charge of the Housing Commission. So let's see if we can't kind of pair you guys up and see if we can't get this item on an upcoming agenda.
I would love to work with everybody to get this resolved. I mean, we really, really need to get to a different spot where we want to communicate, we want to come to our council, we want to come to whoever in charge and know that something's going to be done, something's going to be taken seriously. You know, not that we are just there, we come in and we walk out feeling just as upset and deflated as we did when we came in. I mean, we have to do better for our community.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who would like to come before the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Next item, please.
Item six, consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor's sign.
Hold up, Williams.
Go ahead.
I would like to discuss a topic on here. I received the anonymous note about one of the consent agenda items I think needs further review. And that is the appointment of Steve Deckent to replace Aubrey Abbott Patterson for the full three-year term of the Housing Committee. And the letter reads, I would like to discuss my serious concerns regarding, regarding Steve Deckent being appointed to the Housing Committee. I find it very troubling that he is being considered not only because of his strong declaration of strict code enforcement. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I've had a long couple of days. Which has to do with some of the cultural chains that we're willing to do. And I think appointing someone like that is bringing back some of the culture chains that we're trying to culture out of at the, at the moment. Oops, sorry. And another thing is, he said, his desire to seek criminalization of cosmetic deficiencies, like we talked about today, trying to get out into a new atmosphere. I think that his appointment would backslide us in that respect. I submitted a complaint on his property located at 313 East Sherman in February of 2020. It is now six months later and the property is in the same or worsening condition. I've enclosed pictures for you to review. This property has excessive peeling and chipping paint, windows that have been boarded up and paint over sagging porch ceilings that have exposed exterior.
Counsel, allow me to interrupt. This is the consent agenda. If you want to separate that item for discussion, that's what you should do.
Okay, let's separate that item and come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, so movement to, or there is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item F on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on that item other than item F?
Yes, I got a, I had another, had that email and also had another person call me.
Okay, but are we, is it still on this item? We're actually.
Excluding item F.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on consent agenda exclusion of item F.
Okay.
So please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hyra State Carvalho?
Yes. Okay, let's come back to item 6F. Consideration of approval of appointments to the Hutchinson Housing Commission. Okay, continue.
All right, I had another item. A person called me and said they were, I want to know how they picked the people, to be honest. She said that she wasn't even, had a note or anything saying that she was not, could not be on the commission. And she said she's tried and all that's gained. She called me and to find out how that's done.
Well, typically, people who are, who fill out the application, those applications go before the commission or the commission chair or staff person in charge of the commission. And then recommendation is made to the mayor for appointment. If there seems to be an issue with any of the appointments that come before me or any other mayors, they reach out and ask to see the entire field of applicants and then choose. That's typically how it's done.
Does the person, when they get rejected, get a letter or something telling them that they're not?
Well, in the past, we've kept them in the pool for future considerations. And so if you apply to be on a commission, of which there are several, and you're not selected right away, we don't toss your application. It's still in the pool for consideration for two years, for two years. Does that make sense? So if she filled out an application, so for instance, I have a friend, an attorney, who applied to be on the human relations commission, but she wasn't selected in the first, in the last, I think, two open seats. But she's still in the pool and still wants to remain under consideration for future openings. Does that make sense?
Yes, no, I don't. I think, how do I say this? We give them the power to certain people to, to let them on the board. I think the commi, the city commissioners should know all the people that's on the board. And we should have a little say on our boards. You, you do a great job, but I do think all the city commissioners need to know who is on the list of the board. And let us help you give a recommendation on to that. This way we won't have this kind of problem. When she called me and gave me a letter, I didn't have no answer for it. I don't know how you guys pick it. I don't know how you do it. So this is the first time I found out about it. But I do think that the city commissions, commissioners need to have a say in people that are on the boards. They represent our city and they do the stuff for our city. And we should have a say. That's my opinion. And, but that's my part of saying that.
So, I mean, we could have a conversation at a later date about putting that on the agenda for changing the process for those appointments. But right now, we do have to address the actual agenda item. So it sounds like to me there's some question about allowing Steve Deckent on the board. And so I, I mean, I understand those concerns, Sarah. I think, I think that you bring up some good points. I want to express my reasoning in approving Steve Deckent for appointment. Steve has been a representative of Interfaith Housing Services for well over a decade. I'm not sure he's, I don't know if he's any longer associated with that community housing development organization. But he chaired Interfaith Housing Services for a few years. So he has a very deep understanding of some of the housing concerns that affect people in the most marginalized populations in our community, elderly and disabled. He also, you know, of course, was a city council member for four years?
Four years.
Four years. And so he was involved in the expansion of housing programs that have significantly impacted our community for the better. Things like expanding Brush Up Hutch, advocating for grants to help homeowners with down payments, advocating for funding to, for people to fix up their homes instead of just paint them. So I think he has a very deep understanding of housing that most average citizens wouldn't. I, I also think it's important to have a variety of people on a commission that provide diverse opinions on items. So we don't all, we don't want a group of people who all think the same, right? We, we've seen where that gets us. So I personally am in favor of keeping Steve Deckent on the docket for this appointment.
I personally have been in meetings on the Housing Commission as a sit-in, with Deckent also there as a sit-in. And my concern comes from, he has a very, he's spoken to me in a way of interrupting me. He has been very, he's, he can be very stubborn and almost bullheaded in a sense of, he will railroad you over to get his point across. Like, almost like a bully in a certain sense, because what he gets in his head has to be what's right. And that's just from me attending several meetings with him in there. Two, he doesn't hold himself to the same standards that he was trying to hold other people to, which I find very concerning. I had talking, I actually talked to John Vetter about, a person had sent me a picture on Steve Deckent's property. So I took it to Vetter and said, is this a violation? Without telling him who it was. Vetter said, yes, it is a violation. I will make sure to get that sent out. And then I told him who it was and then no, nothing was sent out. So I feel like if you're going to have violations on your property, you need to hold yourself to the same standards that you're held in other people. And two, he has a very abrasive personality, especially when he doesn't get his way. So that is my concern.
I absolutely agree that everybody needs to be held to the same standard. And that's been brought up as an issue multiple times and, and needs to be remedied. I think you bring up some valid points about his personality not being everyone's cup of, cup of tea. His style is different than some. But again, I, I think we need to make these decisions based not on personality, but on depth of knowledge in the area of concern, which is housing. And so I, I would still be in favor and would like to ask for a motion for either approval or rejection of these appointments.
On that, go ahead. On that case, I would make a motion, we reject the, on Steve Deckent. I don't agree with Steve Deckent either. And I, I would assume that if we had a council, all the council would go together and appoint these people and approve it. We wouldn't have this today. So I would make a motion that we decline right now at this time.
And I second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
No.
Solner?
No.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hyra State Carvalho?
No, is there a different motion?
I would move to that we approve Steve Deckent as a new appointee to the Hutchinson Housing Commission.
Second.
Do we want to include the other appointments?
Oh, sure. Yeah, all-inclusive appointees, the five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
No.
Garza?
No.
Hyra State Carvalho?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven, consider ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 27 of the Hutchinson City Code.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. Amy Allison with the Hutchinson Planning Department, Senior Planner. Before you guys today is a language amendment request to amend sections 406C, which is our industrial table, and 406C6, which is the design standards and use restrictions for research and development uses. So just an overview of what the proposal is. Currently, our zoning ordinance does not allow for research and development uses outside of industrial and PI zoning districts. That is because traditionally, RND has always been considered a heavier intensive use, more like manufacturing. You know, typically, you, there are uses that use materials that are flammable or explosive. And in, in traditional planning sense, that's why the use is only allowed in industrial districts. But as we've seen, we've seen growth in other research and development type uses in the city of Hutchinson, such as sensor dynamics and Genzada Pharmaceuticals, that don't quite fit within that tight definition of research and development. So right now, the, the planning department is requesting to amend our use table to be more reflective of the broader definition for research and development that would include sensor dynamics and Genzada Pharmaceuticals. As you can see, Ryan also provided some statistics. Less than 3% of jobs in Hutchinson in 2017 were in the information field. But within the city's comprehensive plan, we've identified that we would like to see more growth in that field. So part of that is making sure that our zoning ordinance is benevolent to those types of uses and make sure that we can ensure that people can build and, and create offices in more zoning districts that are suitable for their types of uses. So, and then second, the reason why is, as you've seen with our use table in the past couple of years, we're shifting more from, you know, uses that are traditionally commercial, state-only commercial, and then focusing more on the form of the community and in trying to restrict any negative impacts that, you know, use might have by design standards and things like that. So with those kind of overarching ideas, what we're proposing is that we allow for research and development uses in the C4 and C5 district with design standards. Those design standards would mimic design standards that we already have in place for I1 and I2, which is our less restrictive industrial zoning districts. So those design standards would include things like outdoor storage of materials and supplies that would not be permitted. It would be more representative of what you see typically in C5 and C4. You could not use hazardous or explosive materials or create products that are derived from those materials within those districts. Again, that's set aside for higher intensive districts like I3. And then the outdoor equipment storage, again, you typically do not see that in C4 and C5. So it would not be allowed with this proposal. So we did provide an opportunity for the public to comment. The Planning Commission held a study session on March 24th, 2020. Generally, most comments were in favor of the proposal. And then they held their official public hearing for the zoning amendment on June 9th. As you can see, no public comments were received. The Planning Commission did review and decided to approve the ordinance amendment with a vote of seven to zero. So before you today is the recommendation to approve the zoning amendment, CA 20-01, to amend sections 27, 406C, and 406C6. So if you have any other questions, happy to answer them, but pretty straightforward.
Amy, can you perhaps identify the areas that are currently C4 and C5 in Hutchinson in general, general locations?
C5 is our downtown district. So kind of the core block around Main Street from about Avenue C to Fourth Avenue is kind of our downtown core area. And then C4 is traditionally those corridors that are commercial. So Fourth Avenue is C4, 30th Avenue, most of Main Street all the way up to 30th is C4. 17th Avenue out to K61 is C4. So they're higher intensive commercials.
Higher intensive commercial, okay. That's helpful.
Well, I'm encouraged to see that Steph is being so responsive to our industry needs and always excited to see us amend our regulations to be more in line with what can make Hutchinson grow and prosper. So appreciate your work on this, Amy.
Oh, it was all Ryan. I'm just here to sit at work.
Appreciate your work on this, Ryan, out in the ether, wherever you are. Is there a motion or any further questions or discussion on this item?
I would move to approve an ordinance amending section 27-406C, use table industrial and other, and 27-406C6 of Article 4, zoning districts of Chapter 27, zoning regulations of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Can I please call the roll?
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hyra State Carvalho?
Yes, and I would all, actually like to take item 8A off the agenda. Thank you, Amy. We're not quite ready to discuss that MOU.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. So with that, could you please call the next item?
Item nine, report of city officials.
Okay, where did I start last time? Nancy, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I left at your place this little card talking about an invitation from Big Brothers, Big Sisters to attend an information session on becoming a big. Denise Rodsky, who is the current director, was going to be here today, but she, I think she may have been exposed to COVID, so she thought she should stay home.
Oh, bless her for doing that.
Yeah, anyway, according to her, there are like 49 kids in Hutch who are looking for bigs. So if you're interested in this, you might attend this session. You can do it either in person or virtually. And so, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Did you have anything else?
Nope.
What about you, John?
Well, just a question, perhaps to Jeff or Paul regarding, I know it's last night that the Slina City Commission adopted an ordinance on requiring mandatory masking in the public buildings. And I know here in Reno County, we have essentially followed the guidelines of, of the, of the, of the county, Board of County Commissioners. What is our policy? Is it separate or different, like all of our public buildings for required or mandated masking?
We get into corridor issues. Uh, that's one of the areas that we're looking at right now, private office areas where that's kind of a gray area. But by and large, I think we're in unity with, with what's been put out. I know that other cities have gone against their counties and have come out with separate city ordinances. It is an area that can be further defined by separate ordinance of the city. Paul spoke to that a little bit. I'm sure he has an opinion on that procedurally, but it's all over the place as far as the scope and what specific cities are doing or what their authorities are under home rule. So you do have some options there. But as far as this particular building and other public buildings, I believe the expectation would be that we would be in line. There's exceptions to that, of course. But by and large, I think at this point, we would be in line with that.
So you don't have, you don't necessarily have any recommendations to alter that, those current guidelines for, for public buildings?
I think what I would propose, excuse me, if we felt that we had an exposed I think what I would propose, excuse me, if we felt that we had an exposure issue that could impact services as far as knocking employees out, that's when you're going to see some swift action on the part of staff coming forward and would probably recommend shutting the building down again. I think that's probably what you would see coming from staff, but in the interim, probably not much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, anything else, John? Okay, what do you got, Steve?
What I got? Okay, well, I think that we're at a position where we're going to make, and I appreciate you coming, Jill, we're at a position where we can change things and hopefully work together on things. I want to see that, like I always said, and when I campaigned on the voice of the people, and also we have to work together. That's all, I want to see it all come together, let's all work together and get it come together.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, what do you have?
I don't have much, but I think that, you know, we're all living in really trying times right now. We have the media that seems to be pulling at the threads of our communities. We have just the pandemic. All of us are faced with challenges, anxiety, not really knowing where all of us really stand. And over the Fourth of July weekend, you know, we all celebrated our independence and our freedom. And I think that we need to not forget that the United States of America is a young country. We are adolescent in its form compared to the, our age, if you were to look at it as a country. And if you look at our constitution and when we gained independence, we were not perfect by any means at all. But our constitution, our free speech, has given the mechanism that has allowed us to evolve because we are for the people, by the people. That mechanism in itself is what allowed the civil rights movement. It was, it's what allowed Abraham Lincoln to become president and to abolish slaves. It is what has allowed innovation. It was what has allowed us to go to the moon and is what has allowed us to bring other countries out of poverty or give water through philanthropy. All of that has been allowed because of what our founding fathers created. Now, they might not have, they've had their downfalls, yes. But that document is what allowed us to grow in the way that we've been able to grow and continue to grow. Because let's not forget that that world that our founding fathers lived in, that was the norm, but through a government for the people, by the people, allows us to grow. And I think we should really remember that, that this is a great nation, that our police are there to protect and that we should hold them to higher standards, but also respect them with the highest standards. Because, and we really need to come together in unity. We need to stop the back and forth of, let's say, with the statues of Confederate flags tearing them down. Well, the truth is, a lot of people, there was a campaign in the South that threw up all those flags, threw up all those statues, which was wrong. But is, so I do agree that some of the statues are history, but what were the motives of them actually being put up? I think we need to question everything. But tearing them down is not the response that needs to happen, right? We need to talk, we need to be willing to talk, we need to be able to look at ourselves and admit when we're wrong and admit when we're right. But until you can reflect on what is wrong, you can't learn from what is right, right? So I really hope that instead of everybody countering everybody, that we come together in unity, we support our police, and we support our progress in unison, but not an us against them attitude cannot be in this great city. I think we can show that people can come together, and I think that needs to be the message. Thank you.
Well, I just had a few items. And one item I'd like to ask for consideration of the council to consider is I was approached by a local banker, and this is actually, the reason I bring it up, it's not just for this one specific example, but over the years, I've been approached by developers about the same issue. And that is our policy on the 30% letter of credit required for new developments for, like for subdivision infrastructure. I think it's 30% letter of credit and 20, or 20% cash bond. And the particular instance that came before me, the banker was concerned that the letter of credit is released when it's 30% occupied, a subdivision. But the developer can sell the lot and then people take years, they take forever to build on them, and so they can't release that letter of credit. So they have a very, they're just kind of hamstrung as far as decreased access to capital. Because even though it's a line of credit, it kind of acts like a line of credit because the bank has to hold those funds back. So I'm basically asking if we can take a look at that policy and look at a reduction based on occupancy, like a step down that frees up that letter of credit sooner. There's two developments in town that this currently affects. Been discussing this with the city manager and wanted him to give his thoughts on what that might look like and how we compare to other cities and if there's anything we can do to help encourage more investment in that area by making the policy, I guess, more flexible for people looking to invest.
Jade, I thought we addressed that here with Jim Strawn and his housing developments that I thought that, maybe it wasn't adopted in total, but for his particular project, we reduced that back down to 25%. And he met the 25%. So we released that, that letter of commitment or that letter of credit. And I don't know if that applied to other subdivision developments.
Was that for Oxford Point when the schools were?
Oxford Point, that's right, exactly, yeah, right, yeah.
Because we knew that the schools?
And he was, he was right at that. And I told him, I said, Jim, if you can get to six housing units under construction on that first phase, that would get you to 25%. And that's what we did.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that applied to other subdivisions or not, but we, we did reduce it down to 25% here.
Yeah, I think that's a quandary you're in. Once you get to the particular phase where the build out is hitting that magical threshold, number one, that may or may not be consistent with other cities' policies as a, as a first comment. But the reality is, when you draw a permit for a foundation, you're going to have a creditor that's on your back to get that completed in a pretty timely manner. So to have it based on occupancy of the dwelling is good for utility consumption, but not necessarily maybe the trigger that you're looking for as far as development and marketable property being constructed throughout the phasing under the developer.
I thought we were pretty liberal and, and pretty supportive of what he was asking.
Well, and I think the policy, though, isn't written in such a way that, that it technically allows for flexibility, so we're just going to, I don't know if we want to continue dealing, addressing with these on an individual basis? Or, because I certainly don't want to put the city in a bad position financially, and I don't know how this affects our bonded indebtedness. I don't know any of that. So I don't want to be rash, but do we need to change the policy that, so that, I, I don't know.
It, I, I think in the past, the city has done a good job of bringing, looking at them individually and making sure that the protections are in place. I, I don't have any concerns over that. And as far as, I think the one that most recently came across my desk, I believe is the same one that came across the mayor's desk, that relates to this. So I've had a sit down with the bank on it, separate from the developer. I've sat down with the developer's family to understand their issue and to understand where the subdivision is on its ratio of completion. And the bank's scenario is an interesting one because they're, they're typically in the business of determining what the equity basis is for, for the pledging. And provided the city agrees with whatever that number is based on the completion, I suggested to them, well, you have a comfort level, bank, with this, so tell us what that level of pledging is for the letter of credit. And it may not be 3 million, it may be, it may be a lesser amount. Whatever that amount is that you're comfortable with and you think is salient enough for me to sell to this governing body, present it, I will then review it to also make sure that in staff's opinion that it meets those proper thresholds. So that's how we were going to handle that one on a, kind of a one-to-one basis of just individual consideration for that particular subdivision. The bigger, broader question that came into play, one, are we, are we doing this or is our current policy within the framework and context of what other cities are doing?
Other cities are doing.
And unfortunately, what I, I think, without getting too deep into it, is that we're, we're probably going to need a, a policy with more pages to accommodate the phasing element. Some cities won't even do specials anymore. They require the developer to carry it all.
Very stringent.
Yes, and that happened back in 08 through 010. There were a lot of defaults on those, and that's what soured the mood for those. What some other larger cities did, they changed the phasing requirements of that. So first money in will be the private money. That puts the utility infrastructure in place, nobody's at risk, and really the value attributable to the property development and decisions made by the city are already in the ground and that investment is made. So if the development flops and can't come to fruition, at least you have that infrastructure in the ground, it's paid for and it's not borne by the, the city itself and the residents at large. So there's various scenarios that we could probably look at. I, I will tell you, I won't, I won't come with a simpler policy, it'll be one that's probably more complex. And normally in my line of work, we try to simplify these things so that they're easier to, to market, but it would be a more complex policy, I'm sure.
Well, I'm just interested in a policy that encourages more development and investment. But again, it is taxpayer money ultimately if it defaults. Is that how that works? So I don't want to be rash, I just have heard this for years and I have no perspective, I, I just don't have a framework for how it works in other communities and if we're in alignment with, if we're competitive.
I think we've demonstrated our openness to alter that percentage, at least on that one case, and hopefully we would be open to perhaps some revisions or expansion of the, of the current ordinance.
That was our suggestion to the underwriter and to the family as well, that we didn't, one, think that it was an unreasonable request based on the completion ratio of the subdivision and, and the contracts that they currently have pending. So, yeah, it was my intention to ultimately bring that back to the governing body with the recommendation of the bank and then our recommendation to, and hopefully, hopefully we get close and the numbers come together on that. I still haven't yet received that from the bank, but I think they're actively working on it.
Is that a judgment ultimately, Angela, for us to defer to our financial advisors if we would alter that in some way from an ordinance standpoint?
If it's in the bond covenants?
In the bond covenants?
Attached to it, certainly.
Yeah.
But I don't think in any of these scenarios, we've had it specifically tied to bond covenants, at least not anywhere I've been.
Okay.
You typically don't see that, certainly.
Normal GO bond, okay.
And are specials always 10 years? Or could we, is there a way to extend those or would that not be recommended?
There isn't a typical length. Usually, we try to work with the developer on the length of that, whether they want it over 10, 15, or 20 years.
Okay, okay, so we do have flexibility built in?
We do, yes.
Well, if, if we feel like there's sufficient flexibility already, I just want to, I, I want developers to know that that's on the line. And if they're looking at a policy and basing their decisions, whether or not to build on that policy, then maybe the, the change does need to be reflected in the policy. But if, if we feel like we can just address that sufficiently on a case-by-case basis, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah.
I just want to do what we can to encourage investment.
We don't have, at least I don't have a closed mind to it. We looked at Jim's project pretty closely, the impact on the bonding, and he met that, so.
Well, let me just follow up with this, the banker on this particular project and, and tell him we're still awaiting that letter and are certainly, seems like there's consensus among the council.
That same person's talked to me and I agree with you. We do it on base by base, yeah.
Okay, okay. Another item brought up to me by businesses late last week and over the weekend is something that John touched on. It had a couple of small local businesses who were displeased that we weren't, not we, but that the community wasn't enforcing the mask mandate. Their concern was that if they, if they were doing their part and other businesses weren't doing their part, the economy shut down again, they're all impacted. Two of the businesses expressed concern that they would not be able to weather another shutdown. So they wanted to see something in the form of a mandate. So I was also in touch with several physicians and many residents who felt the same way, mostly because they wanted their kids in school. So I wanted to put that before the council as to whether there was any kind of consensus on putting that on an agenda for a special meeting.
I would not. I think we should leave it up to the county. I think we've done good, we've got a good relationship, and I think that our staff has shown proof to be able to react to things fairly quickly. And if something happened, I'm pretty sure that we could pull a special meeting and react very quickly, and I'm fully on that. So I don't think we need to go above and beyond or do our separate ordinance within, in the city. I think we're all adults, and I think that we should all keep our, the, like me personally, I, I don't wear a mask unless I like went to Wichita and I went to a market there, I put the mask on there. But I don't generally go anywhere. I don't take my kids into Walmart. I don't, I take other actions to make sure that, that I don't have to, like constantly washing your hands, not limiting, like social distancing, getting only takeout and not taking your children into the stores or, and if you have to take your children into the stores, then it's that person's responsibility to wear masks. But we're, we're all, I think we're all individuals, and I think that we should have the flexibility to decide what is best for us instead of a government body telling us what to do.
I appreciate that perspective. Again, the concerns from the businesses were just that they, they will not survive if we, if we don't do our part to keep the economy open and they close again, they're not going to be able to reopen. And so I, I want to be responsive to those concerns and bring it up and have a discussion. I did speak with the commission chair, county commission chair last night. He indicated that we needed to do more, we needed to do more to strongly encourage the masks because people just aren't, aren't wearing them without the mandate. I told him I would do what I could, Ron, but, you know, without a mandate, I don't know that some people will wear masks. We have taken, we have approved ordinances in the past for public health purposes. We enacted an ordinance that prohibited smoking in our parks. That's another instance of an ordinance we don't really have the manpower to enforce, but just by virtue of having the ordinance has dramatically decreased the amount of smoking and, and other citizens police each other on that. Going back to a conversation we had earlier with, with the housing violations, this isn't something that I would want to be litigated or to be, you know, criminalized or even be a civil infraction. I don't, I don't know how to mandate something without a, without a punishment, but I just, I want to have a broader conversation about it. And I'm curious what the threshold is. When, when do we pull a special meeting together and take, take action? Is, is that when we have 100 cases? Is that when we have 50 cases? We currently have around 30 active cases.
Yeah, 29.
So I, I'd like to get a feel for what that, what that number is, so the public has the opportunity to, to kind of respond. I mean, certainly don't, I'm not saying we take action right now because it wasn't something that was on an agenda, and that's not really fair to not provide people the opportunity for input.
Seems to me we, we just, at this juncture, need clarity to the public. And if, and if our position as the city is to follow the recommendations and the resolutions of the county, if that's the current approach, then that message needs to be clarified, I think, to the public until something is changed.
Well, and that's another thing Ron brought up. Prior to Commissioner Sellers, Chairman Sellers, prior to the pandemic, I had discussed trying to pull together a joint city-county meeting. And that all fell by the wayside when meetings couldn't be done. So he did indicate an interest in getting that pulled together. If you are all interested in meeting and discussing with county ways we can work better together on messaging, on law enforcement, and, and certainly on, on the courthouse. So if you're still interested in having that meeting, I'll try to set some dates.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
You know, to me, it's an enforcement issue. I'm not sure it's good government to put a policy or an ordinance in effect that you can't enforce in some way. And so I, I think further dialogue needs to go about. We had a long discussion about this at Bridge Club last night. General consensus was making a mandate without the ability to enforce it is, you know, not getting you anywhere.
Yeah.
So, because there are some businesses who will enforce it, and that certainly is their option. But if they have somebody come in who doesn't want to wear a mask, what do they do? Do they kick them out? Do they hire security to get rid of them? Do they call nine-one-one and wait for somebody to come, a policeman to show up? You know, I mean, there are too many unanswered questions.
Yeah.
Sorry, losing my nose.
Well, I, I know that Newton's having a meeting on this exact topic at eleven, and...
Which, I had it last week.
Yeah, Selena. You said Selena voted to enforce the mandate.
Winfield voted to go ahead and do it. But here again, it's that whole enforcement piece.
Well, I'm a conservative, I mean, I'm more, let's not infringe on people's rights.
Yeah, I am.
Let's give the responsibility to the individuals, but that's just me personally.
I agree, I don't think you should force people to wear masks. They want to wear it, I bring my mask everywhere I go.
I think our...
Wear it when I want to, when I have to. Going to a store requires a mask, I'll put it on, I don't disrespect what they feel. So I don't think, we got enough government interfering stuff now. We might have to have a meeting if it gets worse, I don't know. But we all, this is the United States of America, we're not a communist country. And I always believed that, we have too much government inside already. So my, my point of view is that, just infringe on rights. That's my point of view, so.
And I, I don't think we're doing bad. I think that our, the community, we've all voluntarily came together and done really well. I mean, I think we're doing good, and I don't think that we need to necessarily mandate something on a government level that should, I believe, be a choice of...
Well, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I'll certainly get back to the businesses who reached out to me, there are about four of them, and let them know that there wasn't consensus for, for mandates. So it won't be on an agenda. And I, I do hope that in the future, if, if we have a surge and the county chooses not to act, that the city will step up and provide leadership.
Yeah, if it gets out of control.
Okay, well, those are the only items I had. I will reach out to commission chair and see if we can't convene a meeting quickly. So what do you have, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I don't normally give my running resume, but I think it's important. I, I have an opportunity here that's unique to my career, and that is walking into this city in the aftermath of a housing scenario that didn't go well. It's still a heated topic, it's still driving a lot of the discussion. And I, I see it as an opportunity for me, because I, I spent ten years building an award-winning department in Johnson County that led these very issues. So I'm not inexperienced in this area, and I have a lot of ideas as to how we can make it better. I understand the issues, I understand that they're debatable. I understand the difference between proactive enforcement and complaint-based enforcement only. There's a lot of tools in the basket that we can employ to make cognizant change in this area. But I think one of the changes, and perhaps one of the most meaningful changes, will come internally from the city and its management and its leadership, the culture that you guys speak of. I have had phone calls from individuals that own rental properties and have investment properties in town. And I know the difference of having properties back on the tax rolls and selling utilities that once weren't. I know the value of that, I appreciate it, and I think staff that I'm working with does, too. What they may not understand is that I have a mindset that is going to be slightly different than what they could be accustomed to. This will take a little bit of time for me to do. And as far as not wanting to add different layers of complexity into our existing system, because it's complex enough. Once something goes to court, it's a whole different set of rules. The inspection basis is a whole different paradigm. So it's a very complex area, and it's emotionally charged. And sometimes it's the very people under the roof of the rental properties, you know, existence that makes the complaint, that causes us to go into action. And that's a real tricky area for us to be in sometimes, too. What I would ask is that I'd be provided at least a three or four month period so that I can go forward and continue to make some changes in this area with the property owners that I'm talking to. I'm asking them, number one, I'm not just guaranteeing a meeting. If you hear that resonate back to you, city manager's not taking a meeting with me, that could be true. What I'm first doing is assessing their situation, I'm reviewing their files to see, number one, is it a worthy conversation, worthy staff's time? Because I agree, it's a, it's an item that is exhausting, and it does take time. So what I do, I drive around, and I, I look at the properties. I look for myself, I determine what the case file history has been, how they've been treated. I think that's important, too. Even if you're in violation and you're going to be taken to court and prosecuted, I think there's a tactful way to present that message with compassion. Most people in this community would make the repairs to the property if they had the money and the means to do so. It's not normally people wanting to just defy the city and an ordinance. That is the very small piece of this. So to the extent that I can determine the mood and the future direction of a property owner and how they want to uphold their properties and bring them into compliance with the city's existing ordinances, I'd let that be a little bit of a barometer in how we meet with them, how we handle that. And I think it's time to reset what we've done and to start over, I do agree. And I'm happy to do that, and that was part of my intentions in arriving here when you all were kind enough to employ me. So I want, I want to have the opportunity to try that before we add layers to existing process, if, if that meets the appetite of the governing body. And if I fail at that in a period of months, you guys will tell me that, and then we'll go a different route, and you'll still have some options, for sure. Now, I think the community that has investment properties, they're going to be quick to tell you, Cantrell's failing, or he's doing okay, or I don't like it, but I think it's fair. What you'll probably get is, I don't like it, but I think it might be more fair. We're a large enough community with housing stock issues that do need to be resolved. And I think the one thing we all agree with is that there are bad actors in this process. And we have properties that need to be dealt with, I, I think we're all in agreement on that. So I'm going to look at the procedural effects, how long we've given people. I have agreed to take a meeting with the Gumbles, I believe that occurs tomorrow off my calendar, Thursday, okay, thank you. I have to look at my calendar again, appreciate it.
But you did offer Wednesdays.
Got it, got it. So we, we are having those discussions, and they're difficult discussions. And I am making internal changes within the organization as we speak that I think will be constructive to this process. Rental housing is a very tricky thing, I've been through it at two other cities. It, you, nobody walks away from that discussion without injury on both sides. And it really heats up the sentiments and the moods of, of all the parties involved. So I feel very fortunate that, number one, I wasn't involved in that, in this particular case. But I have been involved in that in other cities, so I'm intimately familiar with it, I know what happens. But I arrived at a good time, my plane landed at a good hour, and it's going to allow me to do things that perhaps other people couldn't do, that were integral to the process. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'll keep you all posted as we go forward. But if you all would lend me some time to allow me to make those changes, I think we can probably get to a better spot. So, without all risk.
So you're asking for like a three months before we hold a meeting like, let's say, on the advisory board or board that we were talking about, is that what you're asking?
I, I think that would be advisable. Yeah, let's, and it takes time to turn the knobs on the levers of, of a big machine that's been crunching along this way for over a decade, maybe, or maybe even longer.
Yeah.
And I do want to see reinvestment in neighborhoods that have been sitting idle. And so if you, one of the scenarios we went through that might be similar to this is when all the default properties were being packaged up by out-of-state underwriters and being auctioned off ten and twenty at a time. People would go in and they would make purchases, because there were three houses in it that might be viable. And they would make those selections, they'd make that purchase. The other houses would fall into further disrepair, sometimes get bulldozed, but it takes time to do that, and it is a positive sign of reinvestment, which is good, and we want that. Everybody in this room wants that.
Yeah, that's similar to what you talked about, is what happened with the landmark building, right? Like, they had bought the two buildings, and because the seller wanted the, the buyer wanted one of the buildings, but the seller wouldn't sell it unless it was a package. And so the landmarks now sits there because it's owned by like a shell company, basically. And I think they're just waiting for it to be, take the city to take it back, because they really didn't care about it, it was just part of the original deal. And I think that's something we need to talk about, too. It's those kind of properties, like what would we do with the landmark? Would we take it back, let it go into tax and take it down and make it into like a city parking lot? You know what I mean? Like, I think we need to also talk about some of those houses that were sold in deals with the intent from the buyer to never do anything with them. Yeah, so, I just thought I'd bring up the landmark and that reason.
Got you, there's a lot of spinoffs on this discussion.
Yeah.
Really, the, the easiest decision the governing body can make, and I don't think it'd be a fashionable one, and I don't think it would be probably a great decision, but the easiest one typically is for cities to back away from proactive enforcement. And they say, we're going to go complaint-based only, it's a win-win, we get to reduce staff, and we don't have to deal with the, you know, all the uncomfortable discussions that go along with that.
Yeah, tried that.
Tried that.
And that's not a winning solution long-term. That feels good for about six months, maybe a year, but then you start getting complaints that are legitimate, serious complaints, relate to the well-being of the community and disinvestment that happens if you don't stay on top of it. So I, I would not encourage that, but I think there's a way to, to do both. And I, I look forward to doing some internal reporting with you all to let you know some of the changes we're doing in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Well, I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn. And then did we want to go directly into the budget session, or could we take a few minutes?
Let's take a, what, a ten-minute break, maybe?
And where exactly are we meeting?
I propose that we would meet back here in this room unless there's...
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That's fine, there's enough social distancing.
Yeah, it seems to be appropriate, okay.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyros J. Carvalho?
Yes.